Welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the living council for the month of December. At this time, you can realize that Mr. Mitchell will be our communication, followed by the pleasure of being here.
Let's pray. Tell the Father we give thanks for the many blessings in our life, Lord, just pray that we're ever mindful in all we do, Lord. We give thanks for his foundation, this community, Lord. We pray that you'll bless every decision we made and guide us in all things, Lord. Bless each and every family that represents in here tonight, Lord. And we pray that we remember Christ is the reason for this season, Lord. Just pray that we're mindful in all that we do and everything glorifies you, Christ is precious and holy, then we pray.
Amen. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How are you, Sean?
All good.
She's one of them. You want to make a little speech about Ben?
Would be your honor.
Before we continue with the agenda, do we have any members in the audience that wishes to address the council tonight, public requests? I know you're already on there, Susan Blair. Hey, Mayor, can you come over and sign it, please? Anybody else? If you could, sir, sign the book.
He's on the clemmy.
Oh, you're here with planning commission?
Yes, I spoke, sir.
You're good, you're right. Do we have any councilmen that needs to add anything to the agenda that's not on here tonight? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I make that motion.
Second?
Thank you.
For the discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. We have received a copy of the minutes for the November meetings. Everyone had a chance to review those. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented? Hold on one, is there a second? All favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. We've also received our council's payment of assets for the month of November. Saw that pack of information, so everyone had a chance to review those. Mr. Geller, you reviewed those?
Yes, any additions, Mark?
No, sir.
Mayor, I move to approve the November accounts payable.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayhew.
Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. I'd like to welcome our planning commission here tonight. Mr. Chairman, do you have a call?
Yes, we do.
At this time, I calls, in the course of a public hearing, a joint meeting with our planning commission. At this time, I'll turn the floor over to Chairman, Mr. Ray.
Thank you, sir. I think we have two mayor, members of the council, Dan, you just go ahead and read the first one, please.
An application has been submitted by Pruner Properties, named after Maxfield and Benny Martin, for conditional use permit for residential use of the property on 58 Cleveland Road in a C1 commercial district. All adjacent property owners have been notified.
Alright, thank you. Is anyone here to speak on behalf of the application? Alright, if you could mark.
We would like to have this trailer, our trailer, Cleveland Road, it's residential. I mean, we want to rent it as residential. It's right now in a business.
Okay, you're, you want to change it from?
Yes.
Ben, is that, is that both trailers, just two there, you getting both of them?
Yes, we, we don't have anything to do with the upper one.
Yeah.
It's the lower one.
Okay.
Oh, okay. So this is the bottom, pray.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, are you, are you buying the whole lot?
No.
No.
No, it belongs to Mr. Pruner, he wants to sell the lot.
So you just got behind the lower trailer?
Yes.
Okay.
Mark, didn't there were some about moving the upper trailer, is that not correct?
That, that discussion occurred at one point, but I, I think it's still, it still probably will move. But it's probably, I told you that, Mr. Ray, and I think it's going to happen, but it's probably not part of this transaction at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
We're going to share the property lot. Pay for us the lower part and the upper part where that upper trailer is standing.
Alright. Alright, anyone else to speak on behalf of the application?
I guess me.
Alright, you're ready?
I'm Miss Maxfield. Do I need to stand? This is what we do. We found it to be a good deal. And we buy and redo and rent out. And this would be a benefit to us. I, I don't know as far as business. I think that that would be something that we wouldn't be interested in doing. I can assure you that the property would be maintained and kept clean because that's what we do on all of our properties. I hope that you all will consider it and approve it for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak on behalf? Does anyone oppose to the application? Do the planning commission members have any questions or concerns they'd like to express? Alright, if not, I'll take a motion to approve the application as presented.
Mr. Kevin, I'm going to make a motion and I'll also tell you what Ben just told you is true. I've known them for a long time and everything they have is nice and neat and clean. Will I make a motion to approve?
Mr. Mitchell, I'm sorry.
I was going to ask that, that RD would agree to include this motion to, take the motion to approve the property to the standards that Miss Maxfield described that you were.
Okay, there's no restrictions as far as anything from this point?
Just part of the condition of use for me.
Alright, have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Alright. All in favor, six, five, say aye? You want to oppose, say aye. Alright, Dan, you'd read the second application, please.
There's been a proposed subdivision of the property located at 912, 932, 938, 940, 942, and 944 West Main Street. Into, it's like one lady's property will be divided into, what, four properties? The property.
The trailer is split into six tracks.
Mary Gibson?
Six tracks, six lots.
The property is located in a C1 commercial district.
Alright, thank you, Dan. Before I ask Mr. Mitchell, I think we had talked earlier, this, there's no conflict with anything the town has at this time for right of way. Is that correct, is what we spoke the other day still?
That's correct. The lines, the proposed lines are beyond the set limits.
Alright, thank you. Anyone here to speak on behalf of the application? Anyone to speak against the application? Planning commission have any questions or concerns?
Let me ask Mark a question if I could. The right of way, Leonard, help me understand this a little bit. As we understand it, the people making requests on track five and six, they only own one through four.
No, I think they own all of it.
They own all of it, yeah. Well, that's, that's solved my problem because I was concerned if somebody else had five and six, we might be encroaching. So if they own it all, yeah, they own it all, it's okay.
They own all of it, RD, the twelve foot right of way, but if, if development ever required, and Mr. Kell and I discussed this, that, that right of way could be expanded with space on both sides. It'd be a, I, I think it would probably end up being benefited the most as to who gave up the motion. That's where I put it, to make it happen, but the twelve, the twelve foot right of way would satisfy the current uses and there's room, or to expand it if ever necessary.
That's solved my problem, yeah.
Alright, any further questions for the planning commission? Alright, this time I'll take a motion to approve the application as presented. I make a motion to approve. Thanks, sir, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, six, five, say aye? Opposed, say aye. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think that concludes our work here tonight.
At this time, I close the joint meeting with our planning commission. And once again, I call our chairman. You have a recommendation regarding these applications to the council.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's the planning commission's desire to approve both applications as presented, sir.
Kevin, can we, do we do them individually or together?
You probably can do them individually.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve item one regarding the Pruner Properties? Hold on, is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Do I have a motion to approve the subdivision of property that was presented?
I'll second.
I'll second.
A motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say aye. Mr. Chairman and our planning commission, I want to thank you for the services you all have provided to the town in helping us manage our properties and the zoning ordinance. And we want to wish you and your family a very merry Christmas, a great holiday. Mr. Chairman, I have a Christmas card here for you folks. If you would give those to your members.
Thank you.
Sat, give this one to T M and take Satch's too, if you have care of him. Very good, thank you. We're going to continue on with our agenda.
I would like to thank you, sir.
Well, thank you. Yes, sir. And we certainly wish you the best of the property. As we all know, we're pleased to have you here with us tonight, Benny and his wife, Sharon. Benny has been a longtime employee here, a faithful employee, has done a lot of work for us here at town. And he has decided to retire. And I've talked to him if he's going to be able to stay busy. His wife assures me that she is going to stay busy.
She gonna, she gonna learn how to cook.
At this time, I'd like to present the council resolution. Your approval. Expressing the consensus of the mayor, town council, and town manager regarding the services of Benny E. Robinson, director of Public Works. Whereas Mr. Robinson served the town eleven for 25 years from May 10, 1994, January 1, 2020, until his retirement. And whereas Mr. Robinson expressed the effort, commitment, and dedication to the town of Lebanon, the county body, employees, and its citizens. And whereas Mr. Robinson devoted considerable time and effort to the betterment of the town of Lebanon for his citizens. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor, members of the town council, and the town manager that Mr. Benny E. Robinson be hereby commended for his service, commitment, and dedication. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution in recognition of Benny E. Robinson be made a permanent part of the town eleven minutes on December 9, 2019. At this time, I'd like to present that resolution to council for your approval. Do I have a motion?
So move it.
Say it.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye.
Stipulations, he can come back anytime he wants.
Danny, you, you can come up with it. Where's Heather? You doing double duty over there, man? Let Benny be in the middle here. And I'll present that she's ready.
Okay, so. Let's start, okay. Let's start right there. One, two, three. Okay, thank you.
Congratulations, man. Thank you for the service here.
Thank you.
I know they want to holler at you.
Thank you.
You said we didn't have the box?
Yeah.
Yes, you can. I was going to say. Have a good night, buddy. Estelle, are you ready on maybe?
You ready?
Yeah. We're ready, thank you. As many of you know, well, everybody's here knows, it's left in the room. We are, we're nearing the end of our bicentennial year. And we have, the town eleven has had a great, a great year. A lot of, and I can't believe it's already just about over, just seemed like long ago we started in Richmond in January. And here we are at the end of our year. The success of the bicentennial year has, has occurred in, certainly not in a small part for the folks represented here tonight and our sponsors of many of our events. And I know, I'm sure the council will speak for herself, but I want to say thank you very much, very much, your support and donations to help us bring in very groups of activities to our town and to our citizens and to, as we discovered, visitors from all over the country came into Lebanon. And it's something that we will cherish and that we will, it'll be a year that we won't forget as the 200th year of our town. So we have a small presentation we'd like to make to each one of you here this evening. And before I do that, I'd like to yield to, I'll start with Deanna and the council members for any comments to our sponsors. So I'll start with Deanna.
I'd just like to thank all of you. And it has been a great year, and if it wasn't for you, it would have been a lot harder to accomplish. And I said, Mr. Gibbons, he is leaving us. And he will be missed. And all of the others, I want you to stay forever. Thank you.
Ms. Taylor?
You allowed us to do something we wouldn't be able to do by ourselves and providing the free entertainment, providing activities for our community and so many other people. We thank you and really appreciate what you have given to our community. Thank you.
So, we thank you, me, you know, I'd probably been broke without you. But we thank you more than you know.
I'd just like to say thanks. We were talking with our, our employees earlier today at our banquet. And this was really a collaboration of the businesses, the employees, the town, everybody coming together to make this a successful event, a successful year. And we're grateful to each and every one of you. So thank you.
Okay, I'd just like to thank you, and we really appreciate what you did. It was nice. Good thanks.
I think everyone, I would tell you that Susan was so excited to have y'all sponsor our events and everything. They prayed on what kind of job y'all did, what kind of, y'all threw out at us, and they appreciate everything y'all done for us. And as council mayor does too, we would thank y'all very much.
We appreciate you. We got more stages next year we'll probably see. But we really do appreciate what you did for us. You really made it happen. Thank you very much. Well, I mean, what, what, what this year has done for our community has actually grown to a, a great deal of interest for continued activities. And it's, it's actually produced another, what we hope to be another exciting year. And we're, we're still in the final stages of that. But I will kind of echo Mark a little bit, Fuzz, we got you back there, Cherry, all of you. Steve, I thought you, you leave. Retire, and our folks, the, there's prob, there's a chance that you may hear from me as we head into 2020. Just throw that out there for you. So, at this time, I'm going to come front and we have a presentation as we call each company. Hannah, how do we, we want, you want to do a group picture? How do we need to do that when we're finished? What do you think?
If we do, most of these folks in the room will probably do them individually.
Okay. You ready, Mark?
Yes, sir.
First bank? I don't see Steve there.
CGF? JA Street?
We'll need to gather up again, close place. Cherry? Hunter, could you come? Where are you going?
Over here now.
From JA Street? And Associates, that's where you are, good seeing you.
Good seeing you.
The presentations will say for, we want to thank our, like JA Street Associates for your generous donation and support of our 2019 bicentennial celebration. Your generosity is unflin and appreciated presented this date. So, there you go.
Thank you.
Let me, let me get you over to the side, Cherry. She's picturing that.
She's got that box on the floor, Mark.
Yeah. Bring your chair.
Okay, one, two, three. Okay. Thank you very much. It was our pleasure. Thank you, y'all.
Hey, Cherry, hang on one second. Are you saying we can't do a group picture?
We can at the end.
Okay.
Let's just do.
Kind of hang.
Yeah, don't wait.
No, I'll see. Samuel Pressure Group, known to us as Steel Family, is here, is that correct?
That's correct. That's the legs. Very good, good to see you.
See you again, absolutely. I feel like we're all singing.
One, two, three. Cool.
Russell? Our food city folks.
Thank you, man.
Thank you all very much. Heather? You probably just need to stay over here.
That's good, one, two, three.
Well, I talked to Steve's assistant. Well, one of y'all see that gets to the.
Thank you.
Thank you. For the picture.
Our pleasure.
Well, Mark?
I love you. Behind you. That's same, should have been in there.
If B J really wanted to be here, she just had an emergency at the house.
I understand that. Well, thank you very much. If you'll hang tight, we'll do a group picture.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, partner.
Here you go. That's over. Southwest Virginia, come here, touch. How are you?
Good.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Okay, here we go, one, two, three.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Mr. Starnes. I'm sorry, Fuzz. Okay, here. I saw a car when I didn't hit the house. How are you doing? Good to see you. So, smile, bud.
One, two, three.
Do a group picture if you think I'd just do it. Mr. Gibbons? Y'all to go forward? I don't even think we could press that before we knew. Could be around two or two o'clock. Oh, I'm two, exactly. Let's prove it to them, see. That's right.
One, two, three. Looks good, but one more thing. I just want to get the flash of this because I know that Susan wasn't here today. She's already calling at me. So, one, two, three. Let's get there.
Who we got left that we have not recognized? AT&amp;T here? And I know that AP came in. Now Heather, have a little, hey, we'll do this. Let's just get our representatives from our counties first. Don't leave me in all the time. But I'll mention that we thank. Alright, here to line this up here, I'm sure.
I'm hoping to go, it might have some chairs up there in the front. Would, would that kind of cut down on the size here? Okay, oh, it's good right there. And then we'll have steel fans. Oh, it's good right there. And then we'll have a steel chair, Samuel Pressure, right here and behind. And then, uh, are you scared of the same size? So, you go up here then.
Sure.
And then, who else is here by the side? Anybody? You wanna start here? And then let's get, um.
JA Street.
Right here and then the partner right here. Um, right behind Sherry. And then let's get, um.
The work of she after, of course.
And then, um, just kinda.
Okay.
All right, so I think this looks good. Um, can I just get Mr. Mitchell to do this one just a little bit? And let's get Mr. Ferguson to do the same. And Ms. Jackson just a little bit. And Ms. Bailey, you go over toward Ms. Jackson. And then Mr. Cagley, you go up just a little bit where you're at. And you stay there. Okay, let's go. Okay, and can you hang up just a little bit? All right, it looks great, everybody. Um, in the back row, if you wouldn't mind, can you do a hip toe for me?
Oh, that's us. That's us.
There's two.
One, two, three. One, four, one, two, three. And. One, two, three. One of these four work good.
Merry Christmas, y'all. See you guys. Okay, we're down to our public quests. And we have with us, this evening, Susan Chandler wishes to speak to us regarding a very famous relic.
Thank you, Mr. Van. You want some of this? Um, hi, everyone. First of all, I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Susan. My biological name is Fields. I am the youngest granddaughter of Mr. Charlie Fields, who was born and raised in a small four-room house located in the outskirts of Lebanon that is surrounded by Bear Town Mountain and the Clinch Mountains. He lay it off of Big Cedar Creek. He was born on January 30th, 1887, and died December 20th, 1966. He was a stranger to no one and had a great sense of humor, always making people laugh. Grandpa was a tall, slender man in stature, standing 5'11", and weighed about 150 pounds with light brown hair and blue eyes. I have been a family historian and a genealogist for about 20 years now, and I'd like to say thank you for giving me this opportunity and presenting my idea that has been on my mind for quite a while. A special memorial plaque, not only in my grandfather Charlie Fields's memory, but for the town of Lebanon as well. And putting Lebanon on the map for being known as having one of the most famous American folk artists legends. He was the son of William Fields, known as Bill, and Sarah Warwick, known as Aunt Dealey. My ancestors had owned the land located on Big Cedar Creek since 1827, until Mr. Roosevelt Ferguson and Mr. Eugene Ferguson purchased it in the late 1960s. He was known to the community as Creek Charlie or Cedar Creek Charlie, who painted his house and everything he owned in red, white, and blue polka dots. He was known throughout the area and touched the hearts of thousands of people throughout his life. Not only in the United States, but a few foreign countries as well that would visit his famous polka dotted house. His guests would mostly visit him on Sundays, where he would meet and greet them at the old swinging bridge at the creek with his, as he called it, his Sunday suit, which he had also painted in red, white, and blue polka dots. From his shoes to his hats that he wore, his guests enjoyed his famous beehives as well, and he was very creative in his art, that he had made replicas of severed doll-like homes for the bees that resembled his own polka dotted house of red, white, and blue. Everything imaginable was painted from the inside of his home to the outside. Nothing was left out in his favorite patriotic red, white, and blue colors. He was a very patriotic man, and he was so proud that his only son, Charlie, he was named after him. After him, he was in the military, an army soldier of 26 years, retired as master sergeant. My grandfather was quite a legend in his day. He was very well-known and respected in the community with his famous work of art, even to this day after, 53 years after his death. And being in the public eye, he was considered famously as the American folk artist, a folklore. He was mostly known throughout Russell County as having the biggest carnival-like attraction for the children and the adults as well. The only attraction, as a matter of fact, in Russell County and surrounding areas from the 1940s after his mother's death until 1966, of when he passed away. There were numerous newspaper articles written about him, even so as recent as 2019, when a young lady named Olivia from New York, who was writing a thesis in his memory. She was able to contact me, and I was more than happy to give her the information that she needed. And then she contacted me through my cousin Michael Dye. I don't know if any of y'all know him, but. Also in 2019, a nonprofit organization called Spaces Archives, well-known for American folk artists, contacted me, and I shared many photos with them to display. A lot of his artifacts were sold in auction off, and the ones that were not stolen by vandals were placed in the Appalachian Museum, as well as the Smithsonian in Washington, DC. The summer of 2019, a very sweet lady named Sandra Massey from Russell County reached out to me and gave me the one and only item of his that she purchased 50 years prior. A rocking chair to be 80 to 100 years old. Articles and books were written about him as well, one being called Contemporary American Folk Artist, and another author from London. A man by the name of Howard Campbell from North Carolina, who was a collector, was so fascinated by grandpa that he had the company Miders Touch Woodworking in Boone, North Carolina. From the wood that still had the polka dots on it from grandpa's house, made a coffin-like box to lay his urn at it when he passed away in 2010. I truly believe that grandpa deserves to be honored in his memory. In the beautiful town of Lebanon, to be recognized as the person he truly was. The man who made thousands of people throughout his life happy. The years of love and laughter he shared so freely that made memories of a lifetime. He once stated that his home was like no others in the whole world. And being his granddaughter, I would forever be grateful for this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to give back to him in return of what he gave so much to others. Also, I'm in the process of writing a book, his biography. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Could you show me where the guest building, all the, is it in a museum somewhere?
No, ma'am. After my grandfather died, everything was left to his brother, his youngest brother, Robert. And in his will, it was stated clearly that the house and the land was not to be sold to anybody. And the artifacts was to be in the home. And the land and everything in the home was also to be, supposed to be shared through the heirs to keep in the Fields family for future generations. And it never happened. Everything after Papa died was sold after Granduncle Robert died in the 1970s. His son, Robert Junior, was left everything, and he also sent a lot of people over there rummaging through things and sold everything. And in 1990s, Mr. Campbell and Mr. King, who was, uh, Mr. Campbell was from North Carolina, Mr. King from Tennessee, uh, was given the rights by Mr. Ferguson to buy part of the house to be torn down. And that's where, um, he got the part to put, you know, his coffin.
I have a picture on my Facebook that somebody was sharing of the house.
Well, I have a lot of pictures to share. Um, I, like I said, I've been doing this for 20 years, and I was really fascinated about Papa and the love that he had for children. And I'm gonna have to be very honest with you. Um, this man that I thought was my grandfather, he was actually my great uncle. And through my DNA, and after, uh, well, actually before my daddy died in 1995, he said, "The man that you called was your Papa was not. He was your great uncle." He said, "Your biological grandfather was Charlie Fields." And he said, "I used to take you and everybody there all the time," when he was, you know, out of military or, you know, on leave and stuff. But, um, yeah.
Ms. Chandler, you have an idea when you speak of the, uh, the plaque in the area, two things. You have an idea of what you want on this plaque?
Yes, sir, I do.
Or you have an idea of the location? Uh, I'm thinking somewhere close to Big Cedar Creek or somewhere. I don't, what are your thoughts?
Well, well, my thoughts is, is like when people come in, you know, visitors or whatever from out of town. Um, what I was thinking about maybe at the beginning of Lebanon, not too far, like in between Slatt Town. And you can tell I'm, that old word, Slatt Town, you know, so, um, but somewhere between there maybe and. Uh, because I think I had talked to you before and it was the outskirts of Lebanon.
Yeah, it's there on the, the Big Cedar Inn. It's there.
Yeah, I don't know. They have a town.
Yes, yeah.
A town, that's why I was.
Right.
And do you, you said you have an idea of, for, what are you thinking regarding the plaque?
Well, what I was thinking about, you know, like instead of the, um, war between the states, you know, where they have this square thing, I was thinking about something like a pole that has polka dots on it and that has a beautiful plaque. And may I show you a picture of what I'm thinking?
Sure.
Now, I came across this and, and I thought, I have to look at this. As you can tell, his picture would be out there saying, and then we can get a picture of his house. And then put at the bottom of it what he said about his home.
Have you got a picture of the house?
I did.
The color of the picture?
I did.
These, most of these. Little son, you remember San Diego?
Yeah, I have it, you know. It's on Facebook. He's my cousin, too.
They were in our girlfriends on Sunday.
Now, that's Roosevelt Ferguson that he's talking to.
Yeah, Roosevelt. He's Dolan and Kim. I'm across the creek.
He's my third cousin.
Unless you're hard.
And Mr. Franklin, this is my cousin.
Her across the creek.
Yeah, she's my cousin. She's my third cousin. Mr. Ferguson. Ferguson's on my train. Oh, oh. I've got something else. Let me, um. Oh, that's right. And I wanna show y'all. His twin. This is my father.
Oh, yeah, I saw, saw that on, I'm not saying. He has your business cards.
They look like twins.
He ain't joined mine.
He did. Four and a half years, yeah, I'm dear. I'm sorry for tearing up.
So, you're pretty sure. That's probably all time. I believe so.
He's my father. That's my grandfather.
I had his house in the side. If it's, uh, if it's agreeable with council, I'd like to ask Ms. Chandler to communicate with Mr. Mitchell. Uh, some things that we can look at and consider down the road for this. Cause I'd like for us to know what we're looking at if we're gonna do something.
Sure. Can I mention something here? I like to.
Go ahead.
I'd like to second her motion or, or back rub across. When I was a young child, dad used to take with her. And I was with the bees, I was in the house, and he had, uh, like, personally it was in the yard. I mean, I mean, it was unbelievable. And as my kids got older, he was still there, he was pretty well gone. I've taken those. And my grandkids, it wasn't there, just a few remnants. I still showed them, but I remember it as a child, so it was really, really impressive. I've always thought about that. You know, so I would like to say, I hope the town grown Texas to heart and follow that with you.
We give this back to you. And here's your key, uh, Mark is, Mr. Mitchell's the town manager. There's a cell number and email. If you will communicate with him.
I think we have.
As far as specifics of the plaque and the, the polka dotted pole. We need to visually see what we're looking for.
Okay.
So, there you go. Thank you for the information. It was nice to meet you. I'll be careful. I think it's great. Okay, this time, Mr. Hughes, public request.
I want to thank y'all. Should introduce myself there a second ago. I think most of you have probably seen me around. I'm not sure Mr. Gilmore probably doesn't know me that well, maybe, uh, just to stand up. My name's Larry Hughes. I've been a lifelong citizen of, of Lebanon area, uh, my entire life, except for about four years I went down to Kentucky, but I come home. And, uh, as, as I, I guess a business owner, a co-owner of a local business here in Lebanon, I'd like to make a proposal. There's a lot of issues going on right now in the state about the settlement of sanctuary. And I really think this town, I'd like to ask the town to consider this. But I mean, the county's dog, lost the county's dog now. I think as a citizen, I, I realize right now, probably this time next year, I'm gonna be a felon overnight if things don't change. And chances are, there's a lot of people in this room will be the same thing. And that really worries me because number one, if I become a felon, then I lose my voting rights, and that, that's a concern. There's a lot of issues. I'm hoping that will be overturned. If they're gonna stay up, I would feel comfortable. There, I think it's definitely a violation of the constitution. And I would like to get, since it has the town, you must, well, the town's part of the county. It is. Unlike a city, you're still part of the county, but you have a police department. Mr. Mr. Mark, uh, Mitchell, he's gonna have a police department. I can see maybe, uh, some undue pressures put on a local police department to go ahead and try to enforce the law, maybe before we get a stay when it comes on. It may not happen, but I really think it will be. Any way I can read the law, it's against the constitution. All right? And I think that it will stand up many things. I don't know whether you've seen it. There's, there's many issues going on. Number one is the ownership of the gun. If you just possess it, the gun, just own it. But they deemed to be an assault rifle. I know when, uh, the, the, our governor sent his, uh, secretary of, of homeland defense down to Evigny a few months back, it was kind of a, the meeting, all of a sudden, no one knew anything about, but we, we got wind of it, lawyers went over there. And I was one of the first ones to speak. Now, as I pointed out, I bought my first military assault rifle when I was either 12 or 14 years old. I'm probably at Army Navy store there. I went out there, bought it, paid for it myself, took it home, showed mom, dad. I didn't have a background check. I didn't have any of this stuff we require. They, our constitution is constantly been chipped away, chipped away, chipped away. Now they say, "We're gonna take it all." And they are going to. And again, I think we really have to step up and as a community, many citizens, I'd like, if you don't wanna vote on it tonight, that's fine, I can understand that. I would like you to have a hearing and bring the community in and see what the cities have to say. I mean, I think it's pretty obvious, if you was at the meeting the other night for the county, I've never seen that many show up for anything before. And it's happening statewide. And I'm really encouraging everyone to take a look at this. We really have to. We don't lose, we lose our building this way. That's just cause of gun honor. That's just part of it. There's many things going on. If me and my son, if we go out here target present, we are guilty of felony because we are a group, more than one in person, is gonna be considered malicious.
Senate Bill sixty-four basically says if you're out training with more than one persons, then you'll be guilty of it's class six felony because if they find that the intent, that you may be possibly thinking of committing a crime or having civil discord, it's a class six felony. I'm a nurse, I've been a nurse for sixteen years, never hurt anyone. In these laws passed, you know, I will become a felon overnight. The Senate Bill sixteen eighteen, sixty-four, three, twenty, be reviewed up there.
There's many things, there's several of those. And I don't think we've read, I've got a lot of them here. I'm sure your attorney's seen a lot of it already. And I really ask you to have, at least have a meeting on it. If you're inclined to vote on it, not wonderful. But you know, if you're inclined to vote against it, I'd ask you to have a meeting with citizens and see what the citizens have to say.
Well, Eric, first of all, thank you for being here and voicing your feelings and opinions. The council is aware of the board supervisor's actions last week. Our town attorney has prepared a draft document. Almost, am I, are we close to identical, Kevin?
Yeah. Very similar to the county's.
It's very similar to the county's, except it reflects the town of Leavenin instead of the county. So, you know, at this point, I'm certainly open the floor to the comments of any council members at this time. If you have any comments regarding this matter. I don't think there's a soul up here that would disagree that we need to, you know, protect our, our second right of passage of the Constitution.
Again, that's a point, I think again, double types of pressure off your police department. And I hope to approach Homeacre in St. Paul, Irwin County. Same reason again, and I'm encouraging other counties to look the same thing.
Okay.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate you.
What's the council's pleasure regarding the second, this resolution regarding sanctuary status of the town of Leavenin tonight?
It's my motion to go along with it.
I'll second that. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
The vote same side. There you go.
I'd like to counsel very much. I really do, I mean, I know it's worth them telling you how I feel. I'm proud to be part of this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric.
The scary part about it is just everything what's coming down. It's not, you know, as they said, common sense, it's an encroachment of all of our civil liberties.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It'll probably be in the paper, too. It'll be in our minutes, is that what you mean? Yes. Yes. All right, we're down to the town manager's chief, chief of police report.
From the chief's side, if you have any questions, I'll try to entertain those. Town manager's side, I'll go ahead with the first place thing is replace the raw water pump at the water plant. We've rebuilt and rebuilt as long as we can and it's not economically viable as the experts. Replace the pump is ten thousand, three hundred and one dollars. Depending on your information that you should give, if you gave me additional information today, it'd be sixteen hundred to two thousand installation for that.
Yeah, this is the cost, though.
Yes, sir.
What was the cost to him, Mark?
Ten thousand, three hundred and one dollars.
Or sixteen hundred to two thousand.
Plus the installation.
Installation sixteen hundred and ten to two thousand and seven. I'm asking for your permission.
Twenty thousand for installation?
Two thousand.
Two thousand.
Two thousand.
We're gonna have.
We're gonna have a raw water pump.
I'm gonna motion to go ahead and get it. And we're twelve weeks out and if what we have comes out, we're in trouble. Yeah.
Three months together?
Yeah.
Mayor, I'll second that motion to replace the raw water pump in town, with our plan.
Any further discussion? If we can do it on...
We have to get them to put it there, Mark.
Yes, that would be, I think it's included in the motion just to have.
That's what, that's what say the manager wants out there, operator. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Vote same side.
Next, as we've advertised our police officer, we'll take those applications. So the next two weeks into the holiday time, we'll try to do the backgrounds and all and submit that to y'all.
So when is the closing date on that?
Twenty.
Twenty.
Then Friday.
Four o'clock, I believe, before we get...
Before Christmas, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll still have to do all the background stuff and hopefully, or we'll have our work done by the next council meeting and in the meantime, it'll either be, I'll be in communication with you about what we do on the, which ones we interview at that time. May choose to wait for that. Turner will be gone before the first of the year. So we're, we're in, we're in a pretty much crisis situation. On the officers going to the academy and officers injured and officers...
Notice, giving notice.
Well, Mark, let me ask you this. Should we open that up a little bit longer to maybe capture some more applicants to maybe try to get some certified? For example, Turner's leaving with his regime change over for sheriff over in Washington County. Does that mean there'll be deputies that may be certified, that may be interested in a position at the town of Leavenin, that might be certified, that may help us with our situation where we're constantly sending and having folks in the academy?
I don't have any objection to extending it further, but it was important to get it out early for that exact same reason. More of us getting out now, but it won't hurt to extend it for another...
And can we still, can we do it and still be ready? Is it on the night of the council meeting, does that sound right of time? Thirteen, so that's good, it's a little bit.
So can you extend it then, what do you think, until the twenty-seventh, a week later? Or further, what do you think?
I don't know.
Anything in Washington County going over the twenty-seventh, I think I've got it all right.
They'll know by the twentieth, really.
Exactly, right, right.
I'd say the twenty-seventh, maybe one more week, can we do that?
Everybody good with that?
What day?
Twenty-seventh. All right.
And number three is personnel issues. Number four, this is another one where we really don't have an option, but we need to purchase, insist for you, but we need to purchase about seven computers for different locations that I can keep. The Windows seven is not being supported, is that the right one, it's not being supported anyway? Current software is not being supported. We knew that when we had strategic, we knew that when we aired Carlton. But we need, I just needed your approval to go ahead and purchase those seven computers because it may end up going over a thousand, not over five thousand. It will probably go, you're looking probably eight, nine hundred dollars a computer, so you're looking at the six, seven thousand dollar.
We need seven of them.
Are you gonna get, or is there a state bid, is there something we can buy for the state?
There is a state bid, we'll look at it, but I think I can beat it. I think I can do a better job, get them specked out. I think it's their business, but I can't remember, but we'll look at that.
Yeah. The computers in the police department, my understanding is they're ten to twelve years old, is that correct?
They are.
Is that...
And I don't know that that's all of them, all of those, that's part of the seven.
Okay. So we're, you know, where are we, where are the others? We got, how many in the police department got to your place?
I, I can't remember the specific numbers, but I know we've got one at the water plant.
Oh, okay.
Wastewater.
Wastewater's got one. I know that there are probably four in the, in the, in the police department.
How about Beverly and J L's dying?
Beverly and J L are good, we don't give a damn. No, I don't know. I don't know about George. It's just the ones that, you know, that are the winter sevens and they'll all be sold away.
So that's it, so you think there will be...
I'm pretty sure there's seven. Four, two, and then mine's new. Cindy may be one of them, I'm not sure. Thank you, sir.
I'll second the legislative department, you'll get three quotes if you would.
Three?
Yeah.
Yeah, see what you can do. Everybody understand the motion?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote same side. I wanna hear this one, I'm trying to get my mind wrapped around that.
I guess it's behind the dinamores.
Well, act, yes, but actually, you're looking at the whole, the whole portion. Previously, the pool side had that cinder block facade or face on it, on the old building. So now, now that's, that building's gone. We can save about three thousand dollars. I'm not so sure how much the savings is an issue, but we'd save a hundred, just takes me thirty-two hundred dollars approximately. It's not a airtight number to use. Cindy, like, I have one in executive chambers, every look at that has a, that has a rough finished face on that side of the building as opposed to putting the brick all the way around that part of the building. J A Street felt like it would blend better with the lone wall of the, of the gym on that side. And it's, it's consistent with what we did have at the, at the pool before as opposed to, y'all need to think about, do you want the brick running all the way around the pool side? I thought the cinder block probably looked just as good.
It was gonna be metal behind the dynamo, is that right? Was it not?
No, it's so high, it would be, yeah.
Yeah, I thought, I thought the reinsurance we saw was just, the brick would have been the, the two faces, this, you know, the main street face and the ball field face, but now, I didn't, I thought it would be metal behind the dynamo. But split face would look better than metal, if that's what they, what they recommend.
So, pretend I meant the pool house that's left, right? The pump room. We're gonna build, the proposal is to build a wall from the end of that pump room to the back fence along that, behind the dynamo.
That's not what I understand.
I think the problem is is that they have the...
That whole side over there done with that.
The stone.
But they would be able to do the pump house, face it up with that split face stone there.
Whatever, whatever we put on the rest of it is what will be on the... The pump house will blend, it'll be, it'll be covered with the same thing as you choose everywhere else.
Now, how does it save us money? That block's cheaper than the metal?
Than the brick.
Yeah, okay.
So, so we're doing, we're doing brick all the way around, even on the back side that nobody's gonna see?
I don't know about the back, the very back side.
No.
Well, that's why I thought, I mean, I'm thinking like you, I thought it was just those two fronts. I thought those two fronts were just gonna be brick. And I thought that on the pool side and on the fence side was gonna be metal.
That, that, I think their proposal was the pool side to be brick and it's good to stay on.
But wouldn't for three thousand bucks, it'd look a lot better with brick aesthetically than that split? I mean, for three thousand bucks, that don't seem like very much for...
The cost of it is which one do you like more aesthetically? J A Street felt like with that big wall there that you look better with the stone. And definitely don't wanna go just metal with the kids beating them banging off that wall, I don't think. I think you'd rather have either stone or brick. And it's y'all's call.
I suppose they didn't take it the same length, the brick around would end it.
So the back of the generation is, there is no brick?
That's the way I understand it, but the side...
I'll share it when we need her.
Yeah, no.
She lives, just on the back.
So the other side will be metal? And you're saying this side needs to be probably better, to be stone?
With the front, the part that we'll all see from the road, we...
Right.
The very back, I think, is metal. But the side that is exposed to the full pool, it needs to be brick or stone. You need to decide which one you want, brick or stone.
And, but what you're saying, there, one would be stone and one side would be something else?
That, that very back won't be, you won't be able to see that from the street and over. You won't be able to see it from the pool, it'll be very back wall. I think it's all metal.
Well, for no more, what are you saying, then won't we just leave it all, put it all?
Whatever, whichever way y'all like it better.
I mean, I don't know if it's brick, I think aesthetically. But Mark, I'm okay with him, like, if the brick just comes around the building, I mean, above the brick line with the rest of the building that goes around, I mean, I figured they would do metal up.
They would.
You know what I'm saying, up higher than that?
I think this would be stone to replace the brick. This is the way I understand it.
Do they, I mean, are they adamant about changing it? Are they adamant about changing it?
No, it's, it's your choice.
Okay. I think brick would be better.
Would the stone go all the way to the top or just...
It would prob, I think it probably goes up probably ten feet.
You're not tapping stone, you're saying something like cinder block.
Hey, Mark, when you communicate that back and then when you check to see that they still plan on using some of our stone that we're using at the entrance, make sure that they, that was always part of the plan, wasn't it, Deanna?
Yeah.
And just reiterate that with them. Like, I think they were gonna put it on the main entrance, stone that's face up with the stone that we've been using throughout town.
So you can, you still not know what to do?
Right.
You'll just have to find out what is gonna...
Don't brick or stone? Brick. Brick. Brick.
Pass it. Yeah.
Deanna?
That's okay, I just thought so.
Ken?
Yeah, break down the name.
I'll go with Deanna then.
You ain't know.
Well, 'cause I see it's two thousand, I said forty-two, right, Deanna.
Last thing, just give me that day on the bridge on the Stuke Street. I've met with Patrick Construction, King Construction and V-Dot. Gary Lester with V-Dot was the, I'll call him a bridge specialist, he's the bridge guy with V-Dot. He came and looked at it, much more valuable to repair than we initially thought. The piers and the abutment seem to be much more strict. The, the piers and the abutments seem to be much more structured sound. Our major issues are the, the beams and the decks, where the issues are at. I'm trying to get my order to be prepared. Also, I have to deal with V Dot. That streaks in the urban system, so I'm not so sure that bridge is, I got to get that bridge in to be able to use urban, uh, urban maintenance dollars to, to repair it. So, uh, we'll, we'll look at it, where it goes to improve. And I've spent a lot of time on this and that. I think we're getting somewhere. I just, I'm also going to talk to Schwartz. The folks who inspected the bridge one more time. I got to talk to them some more and try to get that going. I just kind of let you know that through this.
It's not as bad as they.
It wasn't bad, it's, uh.
Yeah. That's what I thought, it's not as bad as it is.
Do they, have an idea of the cost?
I'm, I'm, I've heard anything from a hundred thousand, five hundred thousand right now, I'm not sure. I mean, I'm really, I got to get, uh, and I really got to find out what V Dot's going to approve. And I, I don't think that that includes engineering numbers too, that I like to, uh, like to mention.
But you don't have to have any peers.
I don't think so.
Schwartz will tell us that, won't he?
Yeah, well, it'll have, it'll have to be V Dot's approval.
I mean, inspectors, that's the one that should have stayed out here next to the level block out here.
Right. Yeah.
Okay.
I think that pretty would give y'all a, a little bit on the first track. Nothing new to report, insurance, claims have been filed and. And we've got coverage.
Do we have replacement?
We do not have replacement coverage. We have replacement coverage on anything five years or less over seventy-five, over seventy-five thousand dollars. And that truck's eighteen years old, it'll be crashed. So we don't have replacement.
Eighteen.
Okay.
And, uh.
At the wrong, Joey went out of here and said, we got to Monday at the time. Probably forward.
So, so we got, but we're, we're processing through that. We've been in contact with Verso, which is what B M L was, and, uh, we're getting on it. Worked through Workman's Comp and the equipment, built the both of them.
Okay, anything else for Mark at this time? Mr. Taylor?
Uh, just a couple of updates, we'll take up some things.
Speaking of which, do I have a much-to-do in a post session under section two point two dash three seven one one A for out of one personnel? Uh, out of five, uh, business and industry and number seven illegal.
So moved.
So we're second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The voters same side.
Fifteen minute recess.